Thank you. All right, so this is the City Council Minutista work session for April, I'm sorry, for May 3rd. I pulled up the wrong work session, but for May 3rd. So I'll do roll call. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And council members present are Ann McGregor.
Here.
And John Chumperlin.
Here.
And Pam Mortensen.
Here.
And Kathleen Ruthkin is absent for our work session. So our staff present is Administrator Mike Barone.
I'm here.
And we have our public, no, we have our Chief of Police Paul Falls.
I am here.
And our Community Development Director David Abel.
I am here.
And Finance Director Brian Graham.
Here.
Hey, thank you. And City Clerk Chris Lindquist.
Hi, I'm here.
And our Director of Administration Alipus.
I'm here.
Thank you. And then, I believe, our Attorney Andrew Biggerstaff.
I'm here.
Thank you. That, I believe, is everyone. So our work session is pretty straightforward. We have only one item on the agenda, and that is our discussion for annuance. I'm gonna hand it over to staff. Who would like to take that?
I'll just start by asking Andrew to begin with some information. So, you, as you recall, Mayor, we've discussed this already a little bit. We sort of got through some of the items related to definitions. But nonetheless, I don't know exactly where Andrew wants to start, but I'll let him just kind of take it from here. So, Andrew?
Sure, thanks, Mike, and Mayor, and Council. Good evening. Just as an initial matter of getting over a cold, so you'll have to bear with me a little bit, but hopefully my voice holds out here. So, as Mike noted, you may recall about a month ago, we started the discussion on the nuisance ordinance. And by my notes, we got, whoops, by, we got through about the definitions sections up to 1510.09, which is the procedural parts of the ordinance. And so I was hoping to pick up the conversation at that point and get any feedback that the council may have about those provisions. But before we get into sort of the nuts and bolts of it, I thought it might be prudent to just sort of go over a couple of bigger picture issues or sort of questions that I've seen bounce around. As you all know, Mike reached out and asked you to submit questions that you had on the ordinance or concerns or comments. And I sent a sort of a compilation of those with some responses this afternoon. So I don't know who's, I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to look at those or not, but that's just an attempt to sort of provide some additional information. But I thought it might be useful to just kind of go over a couple of, sort of, take a step back and talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then we can kind of get into the nuts and bolts and talk about any question I have. So, one of the, one of the sort of prevailing themes I saw in some of the questions that I received had to do with sort of this tension between specific definitions versus more generalized definitions. And I wanted to just kind of remind the council, we talked a little bit last time, we spoke on the topic, about what we're trying to capture in nuisance ordinance and what this, what this tool is really sort of meant to do. And I think it's just important to remember that when we're thinking about the nuisance regulations, part of the reason that we define them, or part of the reason that they're defined the way that they are, is because what we're concerned about with nuisances is the effect those activities have on other people and other residents of the community. As you all know, and I think we talked about it some length last time, what's a nuisance in one situation may or may not be a nuisance in another situation. And, you know, as I've had time to reflect on it, I've thought about Minutista specifically. And I think that Minutista is a community that's a great example of where the nuisance, sort of, the social norms and customs are going to be significantly different depending on what area of town you're looking at. As you know, you've got areas of town that are much more suburban in nature. They're housing developments where people live closer together and, you know, frankly, are more in tuned with what their neighbors are doing. And then you've got more agricultural or rural areas, large tracts of land. Similar activities aren't gonna, aren't gonna have the same negative effect on neighboring property owners. And so when we're talking about trying to come up with a list of things that are quote-unquote nuisances, that's one difficulty and that's one tension. And I think that the council was trying to grapple with last time in looking through some of the definitions. And that's, that's part of the reason that I think that these, these things are defined the way that they are. And I'm sure you all remember when we spoke last time, the ordinance that we're looking at is sort of a compilation of the League of Minnesota Cities Model Nuisance Ordinance, and then a little bit of the City of Medina, which followed largely the League's model. And this is a draft that's been adopted in a number of communities. So it's certainly not, you know, something that we created specifically for Minutista, but we certainly tweaked it to address some of the unique concerns that have been raised in Minutista. So I think that's one important part, just remembering that what, when we're talking about nuisances, I think it's really critical to think about it in terms of the effect on other people. And that's how you define what is and is not a nuisance. One of the other things that I think is probably worth noting is this, sort of this, I guess I'll call it the separation of powers issue, or sort of, why it is that the council gets to set the rules about what is, what is and is not a nuisance today, and then also gets to enforce those rules down the road when a particular property becomes an issue. And, you know, I got the sense from our last discussion that there was some consternation about that. But I guess I would just, I would just point the council to the fact that there are several instances where city councils in the state, yourselves included, where both the legislative and the quasi-judicial hat, the land use realm is a pretty common one. When, when the council's looking at adopting or amending a zoning ordinance, for instance, you're acting legislatively. And if, if there were to be a challenge to that, to some decision that you made, the courts would look at it with significant deference to the council's decision. Because as a legislative body, you're, you're taking into consideration and making decisions based on what's best for the community. When you flip that and you start applying that law, so for instance, a variance, when you're, when you're looking at a variance, you're applying the facts as they're presented to you and the law and making a decision. That's a quasi-judicial decision, which the courts would be much less deferential in terms of upholding a decision if there was an abuse of discretion or if the court felt that the city made a mistake in terms of applying the laws that existed. And I guess in my opinion, it's really no different in the nuisance context. When you're thinking about drafting a nuisance ordinance like we're doing today, you're, you're wearing your legislative hat. You're making decisions about what the community norms are and what the behavior, what the effects that you're trying to avoid or address are. And so it's, excuse me, it's true that, that, you know, years from now or whenever these issues arise, you will also be the body that will act on the, on these, on the complaints and make decisions about abatements and things like that. But I guess I would just remind you that all of that is subject to judicial review. So if, if there were complaints down the road that the council were acting inappropriately or that something didn't meet the criteria in the code, there are avenues available for people to, to get redressed for those issues. And frankly, they're not any different than a number of areas where the city acts or where the city council acts and makes these sorts of decisions. So, you know, with respect to those issues, I, you know, I guess I would just point you to other examples where we act and we do things in a very similar fashion. And I think that's, yeah, I think that's kind of all that I have in terms of...
Andrew, you're breaking up.
Well, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Sorry, I don't know what happened there. So that, I was just saying, that's pretty much the gist of my general comments. Like I said, I think that it would be helpful if we could, if there are any responses to that or questions that you may have, I'll be happy to try to answer them. But in terms of trying to get through the ordinance language, I think it would be most appropriate for us to start where we left off and get through the procedural pieces of it. And then if there are other things that we'd like to talk about and there's time, you know, certainly I'd be open to doing that as well.
Okay, well, Andrew, let's start out with, does everybody understand or have any questions regarding what Andrew was just saying? And I'll go down, Pam?
No, I think he explained it well. And more questions may come up as we go through it.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, okay. And John?
No questions. I, as one who with an accounting background likes two and two to add up to four, I always prefer anything that I'm dealing with to be objective versus subject. But I know in this particular ordinance, even before we got into the discussion on it, trying to define what is a nuisance and what isn't tends to be in the eye of the beholder. And so I think there's been a good job done here in fleshing this out and making it as succinct as it probably can be. And my concern would be, of course, that if we do ever use it and it's protested or it's, it's, there's a battle going on, that obviously our logic and how this was defined is clear enough for courts to rule, obviously, in the city's favor. So at this stage, I'm comfortable with what I'm seeing.
Okay, and Ann?
Yes, first, Andrew, thank you for answering all my questions and comments. And you did a really nice job of giving substantial points to each one of those. So I thank you for taking the time to do that, because I'm sure... My question is more, I think, to the mayor. Are we going to go over each one of them? Or are we primarily looking at 1510.09?
Well, I was thinking, if the council's agreeable, maybe somebody has some other ideas. But I was thinking we should first go through the questions and just discuss those and see where we're at with that. And then, of course, we can go through any other points or sections that any council member feels needs a little more attention. Is that doable, everyone?
Sure.
Ann? Okay, John?
Sure.
Okay, and Pam?
Yep, that works.
All right. So Andrew, maybe you could walk us through the questions that were submitted. And like, like Ann said, thank you for those responses this afternoon. Let's start with that.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me, Madam Mayor. Would you like me to, I'm just pulling up the document here. Would you like me to just sort of read the question and my response? Or how would, I just want to be mindful of your time and how you'd like to kind of approach it.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that real quick. We'll try and get through the reading part of it as quickly as possible. But let's, let's start there.
Okay. So I've got the document here. So I'll just kind of start at the top and I'll just maybe take a pause after each little piece and see if there are any particular questions or comments. So the first set of questions had to do with sort of the general language in the first part of the ordinance, 1510.01. And there were a few questions. So the first one was, what is, the quoted language was, whoever by an act or failure to perform a legal duty intentionally does any. And then it goes on. And the first question was, what does the statement have to do with Minutista residents? They don't have legal duties. And my response is really just that, you know, individuals do have legal duties. You know, when we think about the laws that exist, we all have a legal duty not to break the law. I guess it's the simplest way that I can put it. And so I think that that's what that language is intended to do. It's intended to provide a redress for the city if there's a situation in which somebody's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So if somebody maintains a property in a hazardous nuisance way, that's a violation of their duty not to do that thing. So I don't know if there are any questions or comments about that.
Okay, questions? You could just speak up if you have questions or comments. All right. Next one?
The next one has to do with the term unreasonably annoys. And I agree, and I think the council member Chumperlin kind of touched on this and others have spoken about it. And, you know, as I noted before, there is some subjectivity built into these, but that's because it's necessary, because we can't, if we tried to write an ordinance that specifically defined what is a nuisance, you'd almost have two completely opposite things. Because what's a nuisance on, you know, neighboring agricultural parcels is not going to be a nuisance on neighboring suburban parcels and vice versa. So whether something unreasonably annoys is going to be within the discretion of the council, who's forced to make that decision if and when the time comes. And again, it would be subject to, to review by the courts if there was an argument by the property owner that what they were doing was not, did not unreasonably annoy other people. So that, that's the genesis of that language.
Okay. Any questions on that? John, specifically, since you kind of alluded to that being more arbitrary, being...
I think we had discussed this probably a couple of years ago or last year, the minimum, that unreasonably annoys. And there's another one that'll come up with, where it talks about considerable number. I know that they both were discussed, and I understand the logic behind it. If you were gonna write a objective code, as Mr. Biggerstaff said, one, it would be so long you wouldn't be able to read through the whole darn thing. And it would make, if you've got black and white, then you've got black and white on both sides. So you start to run into other issues.
Right, right, okay.
So the, the next one had to do with the word...
Ann?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hold on, Andrew, just a second. Just want to, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm basically okay to a certain extent. I do agree with the fact that it could, it could be long to write out something else. But I guess I'm wondering, are we really going to wordsmith a lot of this stuff? Or are we just gonna go through it?
Well, I'm wondering, do we have to wordsmith it? That's, that's maybe a question for the attorney. Well, let me ask you something, Ann. Is, do you want to wordsmith it? Or, I mean, or do you not want to wordsmith it?
Um, actually, I do want to wordsmith it. And I wanted, I want to take the word morals out, because I think in this day and age, morals are individual and that they're not something that is across the board for, with the same definition.
Sure, yep, yep. Andrew, would there be any, in your response here, you said you think that that change would be fine.
That's correct. I've seen in a few different communities, they've taken the word morals. Morals has been generally lumped in with the city police powers over the last several decades. But I don't frankly think you're going to lose anything by removing that word with respect to both unreasonably annoys and any considerable number. Both of those are terms straight from the statute. And so I would, I would recommend leaving those, although I understand the consternation about them. I think it creates a danger, a difficult position for specifically the police to be in. If the statute says one thing and our code says another, we're gonna find ourselves having to sort of reconcile those two things more frequently. But with respect to the word morals, I, I think the point is well taken. We could certainly remove it.
Okay, and so for clar... Go ahead, Ann, sorry.
I said, at that point, I'm okay with it. Take out the word morals and move on.
All right. And then just for clarification, Andrew, when you say statutes, you're talking about state statutes versus Minutista ordinances or whatever, right? So, okay. All right, so considerable number, that's also state statute, so it should remain as stated?
That would be our recommendation, yes.
All right. Any questions on that? All right. Then, next one is subdivision three. What does that sentence actually mean and why is it there?
Sure, so this...
Andrew?
Yep, so this language is intended to provide, it's sort of an adoption by reference, if you will. What it says is, any person who is guilty of any other act or omission declared by law or this ordinance to be a public nuisance, whether or not any sentence is specifically provided therefore, is, would be guilty of maintaining a public nuisance. And the reason that we included that language is to reach out to get at other things in the code that are specifically described as nuisances. And one of the examples that I provided in my response had to do with, in the Animal Regulation Code, there's a specific section that identifies four or five different animal-related things that are considered nuisances. Barking dogs is one, I think letting dogs run, you know, off a leash is one, those sorts of things. And so this language is intended to bring those things within the nuisance abatement provision specifically and to provide for that due process that we've talked about and that we're working to incorporate into this new ordinance so that those processes and those protections would apply in the situation where somebody were potentially maintaining some other sort of nuisance behavior. So it's intended to reach out and grab those other things that are defined as nuisances by the code.
Mayor, are you ready to, all of a sudden, I don't see Lisa on the call.
Oh, we dropped off.
She's back.
Okay. Lisa, are you there?
I, I got lost, yes. I got disconnected, I don't know what's been, so sorry about that. It wasn't me, it was, I think it was my phone.
Yeah, your audio sounds a little weird. It's like you're modulating, like you're in a party or house.
I may have to use a different phone to call in on.
Yeah, okay. I think Andrew led off, left off, talking about considerable number and then the, what does it mean, so.
Okay. If you lose me again, Pam, you'll have to take over and I will dial in on a different phone.
Okay.
All right. Andrew?
Yeah, were there any questions about the subdivision three language that anybody wanted me to cover, or otherwise I'll just move on? Okay. So the next question had to do with the language, specifically the terms blighted and undesirable. And, you know, this language, my response had to do with sort of the general dictionary definitions of those terms. And again, sort of stepping back and remembering that what we're trying to do is craft a tool that can, that's a little bit malleable, that can be used to address things that are bothersome in the future that we can't maybe predict today. We're looking at defining what the effects are. And so if something has the effect of being undesirable, unpleasant, objectionable, then it would be something that this ordinance would be intended to provide an opportunity to abate or deal with. So that's, that's how those terms are used. And those are both also statutory terms, if I, if I'm recalling correctly.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Okay, I have a question.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you're kind of coming to go to them there.
Okay, should I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ann, I'm gonna do a different...
Yep, you're gonna have to.
Andrew, is it the council that determines whether a property has this undesirable effect, or is it the police?
That's a good question. I think, I think it's a twofold determination. I think anytime, and I think this is true of any nuisance issue. So I'm glad you're raising it. The, typically, the way that it would work is that, and Chief Falls can certainly jump in, but typically, the police are the, are the staff members who would field the complaints and address the problem behavior. They would make a determination about whether something rises to the level of a public nuisance, something that the city should be involved with, or a private nuisance, something that only affects one person or isn't objectionable to the community at large. It's objectionable to one or two neighbors. And, and there is some judgment that goes into that. From there, the, the way that we've laid out the procedure for abatement, that decision would ultimately come to the council. So if the police made a decision that a particular issue was within the scope of this ordinance, if this were to be adopted, and the property owner did not agree, they could go to, they could sort of ignore the police's direction and go to the council and ask for a determination about that and use those due process rights. So it would, it would initially start as a contact with the police department, but it, there would be a judgment that would be left to the council if and when the property owner wanted to bring it to the council, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so if there are no other questions about that, I'll, I'll jump to the next one. And that just had to do with the, kind of the setting, and I think we've, we've touched on that, that part of drafting this the way that we have is with the intention to provide a tool, if you will, in all the different settings that it may come up within the city. So I'd be happy to take any questions, but I think we've kind of hit that one a few times now.
You're talking about 1510.05 subdivision one? Is that where you're at?
No, I'm sorry, I was just, I'm just going through the comments. And there was a comment about whether an agricultural versus a residential setting and...
Okay.
So, but I don't think there's any comments on it. So, with respect to the... I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
Hello? I can hear you, Andrew.
Okay, I was getting a lot of feedback there. I don't know what was going on.
Yeah, I was too.
Okay.
I, I can hear all of you and I'm back here. Can you hear me? I'm better, Lisa, yeah.
Yeah.
Got a lot of feedback coming from somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to say it, but it started when Lisa got on her new phone, so.
All right, so I think we're at 1510.05. And there were one, two, three, the first three comments were just some suggestions for additional language. I looked at those, I mean, I gave them a little bit of thought. I don't think any of them are particularly problematic. But I think the, the comment that I just made about, I don't know that they're necessary, because as I, as I pointed out, the way that a complaint, the way a nuisance would work its way through the system, there's a number of decisions that would have to be made. So I think that, well, I think that reasonableness would prevail and, you know, we wouldn't be using the nuisance ordinance dealing with carcasses of animals for a taxidermist, for instance. That's the example that's given. I would be fine with adding them, but the, the only caution I guess I would offer is that, as I noted sort of at the top, this is an ordinance that's been adopted, I think largely without change, although I've never sat down line by line and compared a bunch of different communities ordinances in a number of communities around the state. And as far as I know, since they started offering this model ordinance, it has not been the subject of any significant legal challenge or enforcement difficulty that I'm aware of. And so to some extent, I guess there's, you know, something to be said about that. It seems to work for cities. But again, if, you know, if people feel more comfortable adding these additional caveats, then I think you could do that. It, you know, I just, I'm not sure they're necessary, because like I said, I think that there's a number of different sort of off-ramps once you start the nuisance process, that if it's clear that whatever's going on is not unreasonable or, you know, is not a true nuisance, that you can stop the process. So I don't know if people have thoughts or feelings about those.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think we have any comments on that, Andrew, so.
Okay.
I don't know what you want to move on to next.
Sure. Would you, do we want to leave it as it is in the draft? Or do we want to include these additional items? Just so I'm clear for sort of presenting the final draft at one of the upcoming meetings?
Those were my words for the veterinarian facilities and taxidermists. And I will back off of that. And I will say, go ahead without them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I prefer too to just keep them off. I think all of these that were listed are businesses anyway. So I would just leave them off, because for sure we forgot something anyway. So I would say leave them off.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. The next section that there's some comments about was the noxious weeds. We talked a little bit about that last time. And one of the... the comments has to do with the, if you recall, we talked a little bit about the fact that there's statute that deals, there's a whole chapter of law that deals with noxious weeds. And that, that law applies sort of statewide. It's, it's in the agricultural section, but for instance, it makes the mayor of any city, the, the local weed inspector. So that person is supposed to go out and look for the stuff, I suppose. The, the benefit of adding this language into the nuisance ordinance is that because there's some city obligation, because the mayor is a weed inspector, it gives you sort of a, a way to address somebody who refuses to comply with their statutory obligation. But state law is state law. We of course don't have the option to change state law. And so, like I said, I don't know of any examples where this particular language has been relied on by any cities, but having it there gives specifically some authority for dealing with noxious weed issues that are subject to, to the statutory scheme. So I think that's why it's included, but you know, I don't know if there are strong feelings one way or the other about it.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask the question, and I ask the question to the mayor, and I'm going to ask the question to you. Do you know of a specific example in the last decade that there's been a noxious weed problem in Minnacrista?
I do not know.
Okay.
Mike, is Lisa off again?
I think she's trying to dial in. So I don't know if she's popped back in yet. So you might as well take over until further notice, Pam. So.
Okay. Hey, Andrew, do you have an example of when that would have been an effective part of the ordinance?
In terms of a situation that the city dealt with, that, that it wasn't there, so you didn't have the opportunity to use it?
Yeah.
You know, nothing comes to my mind. I don't know, maybe there, you know, there are other people that have a little bit longer experience with the city. But, you know, I can just say, speaking from my experience as a, as a municipal attorney, I'm not, I've never dealt with a situation where that's been sort of the, the issue. You know, as I understand it, it's largely dealt, dealt with under the state, state ordinance. But like I, like I said, I think the reason that it's included in the model ordinance is because there's a statutory, there's a statutory list of noxious weeds, there's a statutory provision that says you have to deal with them. And there's a statutory obligation for the city to play some role in that. I think that, that's why, I think that's why it's included in this model ordinance, because it gives you the opportunity, if the property owner, I say it's somebody who doesn't live here, they've just got some land and they're, you know, they're off in the Dakotas and they're not doing what needs to be done. If it's not defined as a nuisance under your ordinance, you're not going to be able to abate it and charge those costs back. You'd have to rely solely on the statutory scheme, which, as I mentioned, we don't have any authority to, to change or, or, you know, manipulate in any way. And so that's the only situation that I could envision where it might be useful. Because in the meantime, when that property owner is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, this stuff can be, I don't know, spreading to other properties or, or interfering with other people's use of their property in some way. That, that's what I would envision for a reason that you may want to have this.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, I could probably comment to that effect if you'd like.
Yes, good.
So I can't, I can't think of a specific case off the top of my head, but I can tell you this is very useful language, and I think it should remain in the ordinance because the example that Andrew gave is, is a pretty good example of what could happen. We have a lot of rural area and we're talking about invasive species like buckthorn or poison, poison ivy, possibly, things like that. And if we don't have a tool in the toolbox to deal with that and stop it from spreading, that could be a relatively serious issue. So it would be my recommendation that we leave that in there. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of cases of this. So, but it's nice to have the tool there to deal with it in the event we have to.
Okay, so let me address that. Because the buckthorn thing is a big deal. First of all, I added up between the tree people we've had and the, and the buckthorn removal we've had in 25 years, I've spent $15,000 removing buckthorn and, and dead branches and that kind of stuff. Most people I don't think spend money like that on this issue. Now, what this means to me is that at any time that I'll say the mayor wants to, that person, whoever it is now or in the future, can make the comment that they want everybody to remove buckthorn from their properties. Because I read the state statutes and it is on the list. So I need somebody to address that to somewhat assure me that's not going to happen.
Well, I guess, Mayor and Council, from my perspective, typically we enforce city ordinances on a complaint basis. And nuisance is, is an excellent example of how we've done that. Certainly, I, I don't think that this ordinance is saying that you just simply can't have it. I think it's more if we get complaints because it's now affecting other properties, that's really the issue. Is it causing someone else an issue? Not just the fact that it's on your property? Is it spreading somewhere else to someone else's property? Things like that. So I think this would still carry forward in a, basically on a complaint basis. And we'd have to show some sort of negative effect to, to somebody else.
Okay, so what I'm going to say is, if, if you don't want to take it off, then we should add some kind of words in there that it is directed towards complaint basis. So that we not, aren't opening residents to the possibility that somebody's going to demand they clear their property of a particular noxious weed that's on the state statute.
This is John. My, my take on that, this whole ordinance is based on that same philosophy. If you've got a neighbor who doesn't like you, then they're going to probably lodge a complaint anyway, whether, let's say it's the buckthorn, whether it's on their property or not, because they will just because they can. I, I don't think the police in any jurisdiction are driving around in, in their municipality looking or something like that. They're waiting for it to be an issue with the resident. So I would vote to leave it in. Buckthorn is a very good example of a, a very invasive species. And I volunteered for a three room park district to go and pull buckthorn. So it's, I, I would leave it the way it is just because it is there then, as the chief says, it's a tool in the toolbox that can be used if they get a complaint.
And if I could just
Go ahead, Andrew.
Thanks, Pam. Sorry to cut you off.
Just so you know, I'm back finally. And I've been listening to, this is so ridiculous. It's Verizon. It's not me. So I have heard a lot of the comments, maybe not all of them, but a lot of them on a different phone, but I couldn't unmute for some reason or other on that phone. So I'm back on my Verizon phone and we'll see how it holds out. I apologize. But I just wanted to make a comment to Anne's comments about the buckthorn. I think, I, I know, I, I think she's correct. We have to be careful because when you have 10, 20, 30 acres or more, and you have a lot of buckthorn on there, God forbid somebody come in and say you have to remove all of it, because it just would be cost prohibitive for, for some people to do that. So I don't know if there can be any language in there that, I, I know you, John, you were saying, well, you know, how it, and maybe somebody else, I can't remember who, but anyhow, was saying how it doesn't, if it doesn't affect your neighbor. But they could use the excuse that, well, buckthorn spreads. So if you have buckthorn on your property, it's going to spread to my property. So that, you know, that's, I think something that we should tackle a little bit better. That's my opinion. Any, any comments?
What, what else is on that list? That's specific like that?
Mayor and Council, like, you know, I just pulled it up here as we were talking. There, you know, there's a bunch of, I'm not a, I don't, this isn't my area of expertise at all, but I don't know, giant hogweed, black swallowwort, brown knapweed. I mean, there's, the state is the one that maintains, they maintain both an eradicate list and a control list. And it looks like a restricted noxious weeds list. So, you know, that's all within the purview of, of the commissioner. I, I just wanted to comment quickly on, on Anne's point or, or comment about sort of this, the, you know, the fact that the mayor is, whoever the mayor is, is, is the weed inspector. I think I may have complicated a little bit there. There's, there's always going to be a dual track issue to this because under the statutory scheme, because the mayor is designated as the, the inspector, there's a number, there's a statutory sort of abatement process, if you will. And as Chief Falls mentioned, the traditionally, and this is true in, in I think every city that I've worked with, when it comes to nuisance abatement, it, it is on a complaint basis. And to the, to the, to the point that was raised, you know, the idea that one individual within the city, whether it's the mayor or a council member or a member of the staff, has the authority to, or has the ability to just simply say, you must take care of this. That's, I mean, that's part of the procedural protections that we're trying to build into this ordinance. So while it may be true that, that once a complaint is lodged, there, you know, is sort of an investigation or, you know, the police will look into it. And if they issue an abatement notice, the next stop on that would be at the council if, if the individual doesn't agree. So if the individual doesn't agree that, you know, the, the buckthorn out on the back corner of their 40 acres is, you know, a, a problem for their neighbors, they would have the opportunity to come to the council. The council can make a decision at that time, whether it, it poses a significant risk or not, whether it unreasonably annoys or injures a considerable number of the community. I mean, so that, that's an example that maybe wraps in a number of the concepts that we've been talking about. But I, I guess from my perspective, if we were on the flip side of that, in, in the city, we're looking to, to, to issue an abatement order for buckthorn or something like that, I don't think that, I, I certainly wouldn't be recommending that one individual is the one, you know, that is going around driving the city saying, you know, you must clean this up, you must clean that up. That they would have to follow the procedure that, that would be outlined in the code.
Okay. And I think just to Anne's question before, I think, Anne, you asked a question in the last decade, how many, how, how many times have we had to deal with this? And I, I don't know that we've had to deal with noxious weeds at any time. Maybe a couple of times when the development down in Hunter's Crest was kind of stalled back in 08, whatever, there were some lots that had, were overgrown and people, neighbors complained and said, hey, they should come out and mow this. That's about the extent of my recollection in terms of when and how often we've gotten complaints on this, on this particular issue. I don't know if that helps or not, but, right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick comment on that. You know, I think this issue is one that, as Andrew pointed out, this is going to come in the form of a complaint typically to the police department. And many of these things are never going to rise to the occasion where the council is even going to hear about them. Because if it's a little bit of buckthorn on the back corner of someone's 40 acres, that's not anywhere near anyone else's property and not posing a hazard or an issue, that's simply not going to rise to the level of the threshold where we're even going to take any action on that. That case is likely just going to get cleared, it's going to get documented and cleared out. So it's never even going to come to the council. As, over the years, many of these minor things like that, that's how they've been handled. It's not something that, it, it doesn't even rise to the level of, of taking any action. And so the vast majority of them are like that. We're talking about something where it's a complaint and it's a pretty big deal, and we're considering it might be a good case for abatement. That is the case we'd bring forward to the council rather than just issuing a citation or a warning. I don't know if that's helpful, but.
Well, could that be part of our ordinance that rather than issuing an immediate warning or citation that it first come to the council? I mean, is that, Andrew, is, is that done?
Mayor and Council, though, the, the way the ordinance is currently drafted, the, the city official that essentially receives the complaint, which would generally be the police department, would look at it and make a decision about whether or not something is a constituted nuisance. And if so, they would issue an abatement order or terminate, they would say that the, the condition needed to be fixed. And then their order would identify the steps that needed to be taken to do that. If the individual, the property owner or the occupant doesn't comply with that, then it would come before the council. So it, it would be generally a decision that's made by, by the police.
Okay. All right. Anybody comments?
I just have one more question on that. If you are the weed director, then, and it goes to the police, does it go to you as well?
Before it comes? So, yeah, so Anne, what happens actually, I'm, yes, I'm officially quotes unquote the weed inspector. But if you look at the, I am currently. But here's the thing, what we do every year is we designate people. And Gary Peters is actually the person that we say is the, what is the designation?
Assistant weed inspector.
Yes, Gary is the assistant weed inspector. So it would go to Gary before it would come to me. So I don't know if that helps at all.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I think on these kind of cases where you have somebody on staff serving as assistant weed inspector and the police, at the staff level, they're going to probably be able to sort out and figure out 99 something percent of issues that pop up. I think be careful for what you wish for. I don't think you want to have everything run through the council, as I think somebody suggested. I think you want to keep this at a staff level. And I think there's enough judgment here, enough experience in, with Gary and with our police department to recognize if something should be escalated and include the council in some sort of decision. But I think at the, for the most part, I think you just want to leave this at the staff level because that's where typically it's been solved. Not only here, but other cities.
No, I agree at the staff level. That's fine. I don't have a problem with. But I think, and the other reason I think it's better at the staff level versus, I certainly don't want to do this. I think it's, it stays politically neutral. You know, nobody can say that, you know what I'm saying? I, I just, I would not want to do this. I'm glad that Gary is the assistant weed inspector and that the police handle it. I'm not interested in doing that. But if that helps at all.
I think you're not alone, Mayor. Previous mayors wouldn't want to deal with either. So.
All right, Pam?
I think it's been working well the way it's been, you know, through the process right now. Why, you know, fix something that ain't broken?
Yeah.
The other thing, if, if something does escalate, so let's take the buck, you know, the buckthorn trees. And somebody said, you know, gotta take them all down. There would be pushback from the residents, you know, in a pretty major way, I'm, I'm pretty sure. So, you know, that's something complaint driven. I think the way it's handled right now has, has worked very well.
All right. All right. Let's move on to the next one then. Andrew?
Sure. The next one had to do with subdivision 10 of the list of defined nuisances. And this is the one, if you recall, dealing with ill, ill people essentially. And, and, sorry, I'm just trying to find the specific language. The public, public exposure of persons having a contagious disease or condition which endangers public health, safety or welfare. My, my only comment in response to this is, this is language that's included in the league's model ordinance. Very similar to the conversation we just had about noxious weeds. I don't know that it's ever been relied upon. You know, this obviously is a model ordinance that was put together long before the pandemic and, and long after the last pandemic that I'm aware of. So I, I don't, I don't know that it has anything to do with sort of the circumstances we found ourselves in the last year. The, the only suggestion I can offer is, is similar to the one I've offered on a number of these other issues. And that's that this again would provide an opportunity that if somebody, if there were somebody within the community that had a, a significant illness, for instance, that was highly contagious and, and they refused to stop coming to city hall, or they refused to stop going to the, the coffee shop or whatever the case may be, you know, presumably the city would have the, the ability to order them to abate that, that behavior. And so, as we've said on a number of these, this is another tool in the toolbox. You know, I think there's maybe, there, there was some conversation at the, the last discussion of the You know, I think there's maybe there there was some conversation at the the last discussion of this about whether this is intended to, you know, deal with people with the flu or the chicken pox. And, you know, I I certainly can't imagine a situation which I would encourage a council to take action against somebody who has a sort of run of the mill illness in terms of a nuisance issue. But, you know, again, just sort of.
Well, Andrew, but Andrew, here's another issue with that. You wouldn't even know if somebody has a a very contagious disease. I mean, and you can't ask people because of the HEPA issues now and and laws. So it does seem rather redundant. But the other thing is, are if there's state laws in place for this, then me, because I don't think that we have the capacity to determine if somebody has a contagious illness. That's number one. We don't have a health official on staff. We don't have, you know, I would leave this up to the county and or the state. That's that's just my my two cents, but that's just me.
No, I agree, Lisa. I agree with I agree with the mayor on this one. And on this one, I'm not giving up on. This has nothing to do with property. It shouldn't be considered a nuisance. And anyone, I've mentioned this in the city or outside of the city, has gone ballistic when I say this. Out.
Yeah, I I just think it's it's just too much of an issue. And and again, how do you how do you determine whether they they're sick or not? I I think it that's my opinion. Pam, John, do you want to weigh in?
I totally agree with both you on this.
Okay.
I make it I make it unanimous.
All right, so we'll take it out. Thank you.
Okay, easy enough.
All right.
Moving on, the next one has to do with the language involving accumulations of animal waste. And I think I think that the suggestion was to add the terms imminent and severe risk of pollution of ground or surface waters. And my my only comment was, I think that's fine, but I think you just have to accept that that's going to raise the level of proof that the city's going to have to to meet if and when you look to rely on this language to make somebody abate a situation. And so unless you can prove that it's an imminent and severe risk, you're you're going to you're going to be undercutting your ability to get the to force them to abate the condition. So I don't I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but it would be it would limit the city's ability to take action in a situation where you wanted to to have somebody abate something if you couldn't prove that. So I don't know if there are strong feelings one way or the other about including those terms.
I don't know that you, you know, quite honestly, if it's imminent, you would have a hard time proving that it's imminent. You would have a better chance of proving that your your well or your surface waters are going to be contaminated with animal waste, but it may be over a long period of time. So when you think about our wells and how deep they are, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. But I I really think that you would have a better chance of saying, hey, long term effects are are very possible and and even possibly have already occurred versus imminent. That means immediate. You're not going to contaminate your well water immediately if you have animal waste sitting on the ground, but you may do it over a long period of time. So I would fight. I'm fine with removing imminent and severe.
Yeah, and to be clear, those, I mean, those terms are not in the current draft. I think the suggestion was to add those, so so I I agree with you. But here we leave those out, leave it as is.
All right, are you? Everybody's fine with that then?
No, no, actually I'm not. And basically, if if somebody thinks that there is going to be, you you might want to play with the words. Okay, I can go with that, but you do have to prove it. You can't just walk to somebody and say, I think this is going to happen.
Oh, yeah, I agree. No, I I'm I'm saying you don't have to prove it. I'm saying that you don't have to prove that it's imminent.
Uh, well.
You have you have to prove that it could happen.
And how are you going to do that? Yeah, how are you going to do that if it's not imminent?
Well, that's a good question.
I think if if I could jump in there, you know, the way that I read the language in the current draft, it says accumulations of animal waste litter or manure, which pose a risk of pollution of ground or surface waters. So I agree, you you have to prove that that the condition poses a risk. For instance, if somebody's got a a lined pond, and I don't know how people keep this stuff, but if they've got a pond with a commercial liner down it, then they can show us that there's no way for there to be any seepage into the groundwater supply. I think you'd have a hard time proving that their situation posed a significant or posed a risk of pollution of the groundwater. And I think that the issue that the mayor is raising with the imminency issue, the language, is that it we may take, I don't know, five or ten year. I don't know how long it would take for the stuff to get down and infiltrate into the ground and get into the groundwater. And I think that that's going to be an issue that potentially can come back to to interfere with the city's ability to use this language if we can't prove that whatever this condition is as is is going to cause imminent and sort of immediate harm.
Ann?
Yeah, I well, okay, you just and you just used the word imminent. And basically, you're going to have to define risk. I mean, you you have to do a little 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 bit more definition here in the sense that you can't just go tell somebody. Or or do you already have like measurements and things that you take that you know that this is going to happen in five years?
Yeah, I think you can. I think engineers, people in the water world, if you will, can tell you based on, and there's all kinds of different factors. So it depends on the ground, how how pervious the ground is, if it's sand, you know, and how deep your well water is and and that. So there's a lot of factors that would come into play that would have to be determined. One of the things that a lot of the watersheds are looking at actually creating ordinances, and John can jump uh jump in here, creating ordinances to help people, how to say, get rid of manure or to stockpile it so it doesn't get into the ground and doesn't get into our waterways. But there's a lot. There's a lot of ways to determine how long it would take to actually reach the drinking water, the groundwater, and how long it would take to reach our water bodies. And then they also know how much, how do you say, affluent and how much toxins there are in in it. It's all it's science that that would determine that. That helps.
And how many cases have that?
We don't really pursue it here that much. I think, like I said, the the bigger issue would be with if the watersheds would want to pursue a manure management program. That would be where we would maybe discuss how they would manage their manure and how they would prevent it from entering wells and waters and that type of thing. I'm not sure where, how, so this might dovetail into that eventually. So if it's not in our nuisance ordinance, you may have to create just simply from the fact that watersheds may require this in the future, and some already do. So they may say you have to have a manure management ordinance. And I know Pioneer has talked about it, and I know MCWD and some other watersheds have already talked about it as well. But this would kind of. Yeah.
Madam, Madam Mayor, yes, that's there is a manure management. I would it's not an ordinance, a policy, let's say, I believe it's the DNR. And some of the cities, and I can't quote the cities, and I'm not sure if there's any of them, Pioneer, Sarah Creek, that have adopted it. The reason is it's more ear tag for industrial stockyards, large farms. If you're in a very rural community, especially if if we had lots of farms in Minatrista because we have so many wetlands and and creeks, it becomes a bigger issue. Now, I don't think we've ever, the city of Minatrista, has considered adopting that. And if we did, then that would possibly replace the verbiage here. But short of adopting that, which again is a whole separate policy, if you want to call it, or it'd be more code, city code, this kind of hits the spot for being all encompassing. It would not only deal with large farms, where you would think of this as being more of an issue, and it could deal with with small hobby farms, horses, et cetera. Pig farms especially are very volatile. We don't have them, I'm aware of. But do have some cattle, do have horses, obviously, in the city. I think this still fits its intended purpose. So short of adopting some other manure policy per se, I would leave this as is.
Well, I think my my one comment would be, it doesn't belong here. I mean, maybe it's, I mean, I don't know that it belongs in the nuisance properties. It doesn't belong in something else.
Well, that Andrew, what what do you think?
Madam Mayor, you know, I think that's certainly the prerogative of the council. The caution I would offer is that by or the the benefit of adding it or leaving it in this section is that we're we're also not, we're not only just defining the list of nuisances, we're creating the procedural safeguards to 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 deal with abating those nuisances. So either compelling property owners to take action or offer authorizing the city to take action if they refuse to do so. So if you want to put something to do with this topic somewhere else in the code, I don't know off the top of my head where that might fit better, then you'll have to sort of grapple with what's the procedure going to look like. And and, you know, there are ways to deal with that. And I guess you want to absolutely with that.
Okay, well, okay, so Ann, explain again exactly what what's the wording you want or don't want? Let me ask that.
The wording I want is which pose which either define the word risk, which is difficult to do, or put in the words an imminent and severe risk. And then and then you've covered not targeting hobby farms.
Okay. All right, anybody have an objection to that then? I mean, if I I it's I guess it Andrew, you said you think it's fine, although it's not worth noting that would generally raise the burden of proof on the city, but nonetheless, maybe leave it in like that, the imminent and severe risk.
The the only caution that I would offer, Mayor, and this would be what I would urge the council to consider is that I I think that's 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 a, you know, that's a reasonable end goal. But I think by by adding those additional burdens of proof, if you will, there it's it makes it much more likely or much more possible that the city is going to be faced with an issue that you're you're not going to be able to address because you're not going to be able to to meet those those burdens of proof that you, you know, required yourself to meet. Whether, you know, as I as I noted somewhere else in my responses, this entire ordinance deals with balancing the rights of one property owner versus another or one property owner versus the community at large. And so you may be fine with that, and that's okay. But I just want to be very clear that by increasing the burden of proof that you're going to have to to meet to utilize this language, you'll have to accept that there may be situations where the city very much feels that a certain situation is going to pollute the groundwater. But if we can't prove that it's an imminent situation, and and I, you know, I admit, I I don't know the technical issues associated with that. But that that's going to be a potential situation where we're not able to use this language to address that. And, you know, I can see that that would be a frustrating result. So that would be my only caution to including this, these additional qualifiers.
Well, how about this? How about if it said which pose a health risk of pollution or some add health in there rather than severe, a health risk of pollution of ground or surface waters or which endanger public, well, it says health, safety or welfare. Yeah. Well, let's think about that one, and we can come back to it.
Okay.
All right. Next one.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the the last three sort of comments here just kind of had to do more generally with the ordinance. And, you know, I think we've already hit all of these these points, so I kind of will just gloss over them, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions. And then the following couple of issues, we talked about where this ordinance draft came from and why why we've sort of used it as a a model. The other issue that came up is the idea of an abatement order. And there was one that was shared with the council, I know. If you recall, and I believe that it was included in in tonight's packet, there was a memo that we drafted a few years ago that addressed sort of the different avenues that cities have to address problem properties. And the abatement order that was shared is something from the league. It deals with hazardous properties or hazardous buildings under chapter four sixty three of state statute. Excuse me. And I think the comment was, why doesn't the city just issue this order? And I just wanted to make a couple of of points about the four sixty three process. The first point that I that I made is that a four sixty, a chapter four sixty three process requires a lawsuit. So it's not simply filing an order in order to address a hazardous property or a hazardous building under the statute. The city is required to to file a lawsuit. And I know that issue has come up in the past. So it's it's not sort of a simple undertaking and and, you know, that's a that's a big undertaking for many communities. And the the second point that I would just raise is that as we've talked about with some of these other issues, when you rely solely on state law, that you, the city, would be foregoing your opportunity to create a more community tailored approach. And so some some properties will perhaps meet the statutory definition of a hazardous property, or there will be a building that's a hazardous building, but many won't. It's a relatively restrictive definition. It doesn't deal with ice sores. It doesn't generally deal with accumulations of of, you know, junk. It deals with things that are sort of preeminent health and safety issues, buildings that could fall down on people and those sorts of things. And so it's it's, you know, I hate to keep using the same cliche, but it's a tool in the toolbox. But it won't. It's not nearly as broad or responsive to sort of the community needs as the nuisance ordinance would be. So I just wanted to sort of touch on that because I know that 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 has been shared and and maybe a question in some minds. And then I think the other two comments were things we already talked about, oh, the eight inches as far as long grass. Actually, I was looking back at my notes. The last time we spoke about this, I think the council directed us to change that to ten inches. So we'll incorporate that. I don't know where eight inches came from. I think that's pretty general. That's a a number that many communities, I think, use as sort of the point at which people get tired of looking at uncut grass. And and I think that it's certainly within the the city's discretion, whether it's eight inches or ten inches or twelve inches. So we, unless there's a different opinion tonight, we'll incorporate the ten inches and and we can go with that.
Okay, are we okay with ten?
I am.
Pam, okay, Pam?
I'm good with that as well.
Okay, John?
It's fine.
All right, okay, all right. Next.
So, Mayor and Council, that's all in terms of the questions and responses. I don't know if if you want to run through the the procedural issues in the ordinance or if there's any specific questions or comments, I'm happy to try to answer them. But I think, I mean, frankly, I think we've talked quite a bit about how the process would work. But I I'm happy to take any questions about the procedural parts.
Why don't we do a general or any questions, quite honestly, just to kind of wrap this up? We we can have about a few more minutes. I'd like to wrap it up maybe shortly before around six forty five. So we've got about six or seven more minutes. Anybody have? So here's here's just one real quick comment. Maybe we can all kind of think on that subdivision twelve, the accumulation of animal waste a little bit more on the wording and maybe refine that a little bit. Maybe we don't use imminent and severe. Maybe there's some other language that we could use. So let's just think about that a little bit. But if there's any other questions, comments, let's get those out there now. Pam or John or Ann, anybody, you can just pipe up.
Okay, it's Ann. Okay, I'm not. What?
Ann.
Okay, so I'm not necessarily finding fault in the fifteen ten point oh nine. I I just want to ask that literally ask the question. When I I'm under the impression that when you want to go after a nuisance property, that it's based on one of two things, and at this point, I'm confused as to which one it is. Is it the number of complaints that go to the police? Or is it a petition signed by neighbors? Which is it or both?
Who is is that Chief Falls or is that Andrew? Um, who, is, is that Chief Falls or is that Andrew? Andrew?
Mayor, I can certainly chime in. Uh, it, it could be either, in my opinion. The way that I understand it normally works is, is it, it's complaint driven, like many code, code enforcement issues. Um, but I think in either, I think either situation would trigger the police to look into it and, and start working their way through this process if this was the ordinance that was in place.
Okay, so with, but to Anne's question, would some, would it like, is one complaint, um, the police would look into it? Maybe that's a question for Paul. Or does, do three or four people have to complain? Or do 10 people have to complain? Or how does that work? I guess maybe Paul would answer that.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I, that's a great question. So anytime we receive a complaint, whether it's one or more, we certainly look into the situation and determine whether or not there, there is a, an issue there. So it really doesn't matter if there's one or more. Certainly the more complaints we get, uh, on a particular property, um, that can be helpful in determining whether or not that's affecting a considerable number of people. So that's helpful, but we start that process with a single complaint and we evaluate uh, each property or complaint on its own merit and then determine from there what, if any, action needs to be taken.
Okay. Anne, does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah. And so, and let's take it just one step further. And then the, whenever a designated city official on determines this, does the city official volunteer? Is it, is it near wherever the city official lives? How, how does that come about? And again, I'm asking for information's sake. I'm not, I'm not actually being critical.
Um, Paul, would that be you or?
I, I think so. I think when they say city official, that, that can mean any number of employees. That's simply a, just a mechanism. Did they complain to Public Works, for example, who would then might, every once in a while, someone might make a complaint to Public Works staff because they might see them in the area, for example, uh, and then they would simply forward that to us to investigate. Or it might come about through the planning department, or, um, someone might complain directly to a council member. And, uh, oftentimes then we get that forwarded to us. Um, so I think the idea is just to make it as easy as possible for residents to get the information to the city, however they do that. Certainly we would prefer to get it directly, but if we don't, that's okay. We'll follow up and get what we need for information in order to be able to go out and, uh, investigate whatever the issue is.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you. All right. John?
This is John. I want to follow up on that theme because that's, I had my notes written here. So the step, the process has been started, if we want to call it a process. Someone called and complained that initiates, and correct me anywhere along the line here, Chief Falls, if I'm misstepping. An officer may very well drive by the property to view what the complainant said. And then does he or she come back? And is there a discussion that takes place to decide whether as the city, we're going to move forward with an official complaint? Or does the, say, the police, uh, drives by and he drives in the driveway and, and the owner is standing out by the garage and does he get out and talk to him? What is the steps there?
Yes, Mayor and Council, that, that's a great question. Um, and so the answer to that is, oftentimes that's exactly how it occurs. So we'll get the complaint and then someone from the police department, depending on the situation. Uh, most code enforcement issues are given to the CSOs initially. Um, and they are supervised, obviously by licensed police officers. So, you know, if it's a really complex case, that supervision is, is much more in depth. Um, but a lot of these cases never rise to, to any considerable uh, level. They're just a simple, hey, that junk vehicle's been sitting there and it needs to be moved, or that trailer's been parked there in front of the house on the street, or, 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 um, any number of minor issues. The vast majority of nuisance complaints that we deal with are relatively minor. So I just want to remind everyone that, you know, in the case of the minor ca, uh, issues, we'll, we'll just reach out to the property owner or the occupant, let them know that we got a complaint, what the issue is. And most of the time, they, they, uh, address the issue and we clear the case out. The vast majority are handled like that. Every once in a while, we'll get kind of this issue keeps repeating itself. We may end up issuing a citation and that takes care of it. Um, and then in really severe cases, such as some that we're more aware of recently, uh, if it rises to the level of, of, uh, a complete and utter nuisance where it's just stuff all over the place, that might be an issue that requires abatement, which is something the city, to my knowledge, has never done. That'll be new if, if we go down that road if the council chooses. But that process would, at some point, the council would be made aware of, we've done everything we can do. This is a good candidate for abatement. And then we'd have a discussion as to whether or not you're comfortable with that, or want to move forward with that. Does, does that answer your question?
That's part of it, but I would guess I wanted to go down the, further down the line. And so you get pushback from the property owner, irregardless of what the issue, whether it's a simple, you, we think it's a simple issue, or it's a big issue. What, where do we get to when we physically serve them with a, a legal document, whether that's a, uh, delivered in person or it's sent through registered mail? That is after what you've just described, where you've kind of made them aware of it and kindly asked them to resolve it without any time period probably being set, legally time period. And then you drive by a month later and it's still the same scenario. Is that when you would physically follow the step that's in, uh, ten fifteen ten oh nine, sub one and sub two?
Yes. At some point, we would, we would make it very clear what the violations are and what, what needs to be done to rectify that situation. And we do that in writing, and then we'd attach a, a timeline to it. And then when they don't meet that timeline, we'd have to move to the next step. So that would be correct.
And how's the timeline arrive that? I know I didn't see anything in any state statutes where depending on what the nuisance is, there's a list, and I figured there wouldn't be. But how would you, or how does the city arrive at a time period? I mean, removing one vehicle I could see could be short. And if it was a whole yard of something, obviously that's going to take longer. How, how do you foresee that being applied?
That, that's a good question. And that's a, been a judge, to date, that has been a judgment call on our part, the police department. So, for example, uh, we've had people that had, uh, I'm trying to think of a, a good example. Um, we've never abated a property, so I don't have an example of that. But for example, we had a, a, it's a situation where someone put a very large amount of wood. Uh, it actually ended up being on the neighbor's property because they just kept expanding their wood pile. Um, but it was a, a, a very substantial amount of wood. So we couldn't, it wasn't reasonable to give them a week to move all that. So we gave them 30 days and they got it out of there. That would be an example of, uh, it just, the timeline has to be reasonable to what we're asking them to do. And, and that's not spelled out anywhere.
So, um, it's, I have six forty-eight here. By the time we adjourn, um, it's going to be about six fifty, and we need a few minutes to stretch our legs and, uh, get back on for our seven o'clock meeting. So this has, um, all been great discussion and great comments and questions. Really appreciate it. But I think we're going to have to wrap it up and, uh, then we'll bring the final draft, if you will, back and, uh, make sure that we're okay with that. Um, Mike, any, um, idea or what, what the next step would be?
Uh, not at this moment, Mayor. Um, I think we have made some changes to this, and I certainly think we can work with our attorneys and, and, um, go through it. And then we can bring that back, uh, in the future. Either be May seventeenth or June seventh, I would think. I just don't know work schedules for the attorneys and haven't had a chance to figure out how hard or not hard it's going to be to get there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, in the meantime, if anybody else has comments or questions um, or verbiage they want to, um, add, just, uh, maybe send those to Mike and he can accumulate those and then send them on to Andrew before, before we meet next. And I'm hoping maybe next time we meet, we'll be able to go through it pretty quick and, um, either approve or I'm hoping approve. So, um, with that, um, we will need to be adjourned and I need a motion to adjourn.
This is John, so move.
Thank you, John. And is there a second?
This is Anne, I'll second.
Thanks, Anne. Uh, with that, um, we, all those in favor will signify with aye.
Aye.
And Anne McGregor?
Aye.
And John Trumperlin?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned and we will see, uh, talk to you in about five or so minutes.